Part of the criteria.
Great evening.
Hi Brandon.
Is that a, is that a grand entrance?
[laughing]
How do I do?
The back door?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
We just got that today, so does that work? Yeah, we should go there. So I don't know if this is going to be a little bit, or anything like that to, to, should I print down that, that, that paper? It just came off, did you guys have it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It just died today, we said set the fire and all. Kind of like, oh yeah, that's cool. I also didn't know what was going on, when she went up there, so I don't know.
This is crazy.
Alright, it's five thirty on the little computer number there, so I'll call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United Republic of Republicans. One nation, founded on individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Me.
Mayors, are we having open forum today?
I did put on that.
Okay. Um. Yep. If anyone would like to speak, come up to the podium now. State your name and address. Number one, update on school resource officer legislation.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor Council, uh, do you want to take that Chief McMillan, or?
Yeah.
Just kind of an update, I, I've been, we sent some emails, so I think you guys have been following some of it. But I'll turn over to Chief.
Um, like we have sent in the emails, um, Governor Walz has now decided that he is not going to have a special session to address the SRO wording in the new law that was passed. Um, we are continuing as normal, I know of a lot of other schools that have brought back their SROs because they realize that they need them in the schools. Um, and, you know, I was in the school the last, all of the first two weeks here of school. On Monday, Officer Eric Fichter was back in the school. And now he's out today and tomorrow for training. So I'll be back in the school tomorrow, we're just short staffed today, so there was not an SRO at the school today. Um, but it's still, we continue as normal, um. I got it called over there for a different incident, so they know dispatch his number if we're not in the school, which works very well. Um, but a lot of the staff and parents even have come up to me and teachers, or teachers, parents and students have even said they are grateful that we are still there, so. Um, it's just, it's going great, it, like it has always been, so. And I know there was a big, um, fight down on Mankato East. And I don't know if that's going to change Walz's decision or not, um, I have not heard since then, so.
Have you implemented some of the things the attorney suggested?
Yes. Yeah, we have, on the scheduling, if they, if they are scheduled to be the school resource officer, they are highlighted in a special color, we have a sign in an outbook in the SRO office. Uh, when we come in, we are to radio dispatch that we are in the school and then we radio when we leave. Um, and then I have also ordered, um, a name plate, or it's called, like collar brass, but it says SRO. One big one for them to wear on front, and then also, um, a big collar thing to wear up here that says SRO. So, they should be here hopefully this week, um, just waiting for those to come in, so. We have done what the attorney suggested.
Is there a present, presence of an SRO day in the football games or outside activities that go on around the school?
Well, for the SRO is they requested like for homecoming that we modify his hours for that, but all the other games, he, they don't request that, we get the SRO there. But the my evening officers do swing in there and be a presence and just during their regular, regular routines, they stop in and make the presence known.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seven, discussion on potential capital projects growth of the city.
Um, I can kick off this, this is one of many items tonight. Um, as we near completion of the wastewater project, um, the main goal obviously was to, uh, spur further development in the city. Um, housing is one of the items that, um, particularly of demand. Um, I hope everybody had a chance to review the housing study. Um, and also just look at our land use plan to give you an idea on some of the areas we are targeting for that kind of growth. Um, I also provided for you tonight, a couple different areas that we're looking at. We've obviously had discussions before on the property to the north, Town's Edge. Um, that was a concept, um, in two thousand five roughly, before the housing bust. Um, so there's some concepts there for you to kind of see what was envisioned for that, New Life Church did develop a portion of it. Um, but we did plat some right away and protections against the remaining property. Um, that is, you know, held by a private landowner at this time, so we are subject to waiting for that sale of the property. Um, I've also identified a couple spots to the south, um, and I can pull those up. Since those are kind of newer ones. And this was just based on some questions too, on what happens if that property to the north does not sell? Like, you know, the owners just don't strike a deal with the developer. Um, it's harder in this economy because of the high prices. Um, but this area here, the city owns this parcel that's highlighted there, and also owns, um, the parcel to the right. Um, which is part of the wastewater treatment, you can see the, the Gulf Pond, um, to the north. That's pretty good property that we own there. Um, it is all tied into that parcel, but we've looked at this potential for housing. Uh, because water and sewer utilities are located on, on County fifty-one. And according to my conversations with Public Works, would be, would be available for use. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, so that's another area. Um, we, we, I guess, need a little bit of direction, what we're hearing from developers is, um, they can't pay the high land prices, the cost of infrastructure is high, the cost of building is high. So typically, we used to see, um, like when the south end all developed and laying estates, the developer put all that infrastructure in. The city didn't pay for that, we were part of the process in inspecting it and making sure it was meeting our, you know, specs and so forth, but that's not the case anymore. Developers won't put up the money and won't put in that infrastructure. So, we need the council to give us some direction on what, you know, what you want us to do, do you want us to, to look at other programs, we've talked about, um, some programs like Stock Rapids did where they had the city and the county put some money in to match some of those costs. Um, do you want to look at the city putting it in and assessing, you know, or selling? I, I guess I need a little bit of thoughts from the council on where you want to see this happen and, and what kind of investment you're willing to do, are you willing to put up some significant dollars to make this happen? Um, that may also mean us getting involved in purchasing land, um, for this. Um, we have some tools, um, there are some, you know, different economic development tools that we can utilize. Um, but it's, it's a difficult position right now that we're in because of what the economy is doing. So, I guess, do we, I, I, I open up to you for questions, comments, I'm looking for some direction on all these items that we have listed tonight. I really need to see what's, what is the council comfortable with, and also what are your priorities? Because to do all of these all at once, I think is going to be a very difficult task, so we're going to have to prioritize our resources and, um, staff needs to know that as we move forward.
Well, we're definitely going to have to open up something somewhere. I mean, we did, we got a lot of money invested in this wastewater to get people out here.
Mm-hmm.
To what limits can we go as a city to help them out and still be within a comfortable budget?
It's, it's gonna be tough, I mean, we're, we're talking some significant resources. Um, you saw the numbers just to reconstruct some of our streets, to put in pipe, new streets. It, it's going to be significant, and I can get you those numbers if you like certain areas, we'd like to see, you know, some of this here. We can, we can research and go down those avenues and get you some better cost estimates. But, I mean, it, it's going to be a pinch on the budget. And that, and that also too, there's some other resources we may be able to tap into, like ARPA money, you know, some of those other fundings that we have to kickstart that. Um, but I can't say it's going to be a comfortable budget position, it's, it's going to take some significant dollars. Either out of our bank account or tax levy fees so forth. But you also need to invest to build that tax base. It's, we are not in the environment anymore where we can sit back and wait for it to happen, we have to, we have to spur it on our own.
What's, what's the flexibility out there of getting grant money within a reasonable amount of time to help us?
Well, there are tons of programs coming out, so that's good.
I mean, they're there, but we don't want to have to go through what we just went through.
Well, um, the good news is there is, there is, housing is a con, is a, was a considerable focus of the legislature, so they did provide us some funding. And, um, we do have a couple programs that we could look into applying for help. Um, we, and like I also said to the county, if you caught in my memo, the county is willing to give us some funding that, for maybe that purpose, if we want to designate funding for that. Um, but they need a project, they need to know what we want to use it for. But, um, is it something that the council is comfortable putting up a few hundred thousand dollars or half a million dollars if needed to do this? I, I guess I'm asking you, what's your comfort level?
Well, I definitely think we have to do something to make our investments that we've got now workable.
There's also, we, we talked about, there's some, um, TIF programs, there's some other things that we can look at for different projects. It kind of depends, you know, I think we want to see, it, is it a fair assumption to say that the council would like to see both single family, multi, multifamily, I mean, we're looking for a mixed, a mixed use of housing, or is there certain housing that you, you know, you want to see as a council and only that housing?
Personally, I want to see us start focusing on senior housing. We have seniors that have to leave their lifelong homes and towns, and they have no place to go. I want that a priority, I would like to see that a priority. And I think we do need to look at having the, allowing tiny homes. What kind of lots are we looking at for that?
Mm-hmm.
And I think if, I know that it's big money. And I know with the people around here, you'll find old timers, it will leave. They, that's the bottom line here, they, they just got kicked in the pants for the, the sewer. And it's hard to understand that change in the way they finance. And, um, I'm not sure what that's going to look like fully.
Well, um, one thing I will, that I noticed with the housing study is, um, for senior housing, it isn't necessarily facility. There's actually a higher demand for like apartments, townhomes, those type of things, those transitional homes.
Yep.
Which could serve both purposes too.
Well, definitely, uh, affordable housing, no matter if it's multifamily, single family, or senior living. I think we have to focus on making it affordable. So my question to you Brandon is, what is the financial climate with banking right now? Are they willing to fork out the money? To the right person?
No. Uh, it, the, the problem is the cost, the cost of, for infrastructure, the cost, you know, for, for labor force. Um, materials is, is immaterial, uh, you know, interest rates are high also. But the, we have affordable housing, one of the biggest things they're seeing in, you know, doing developments, right, single family houses, is in order for those developers to put that infrastructure in, it's making those lots seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars apiece. When all of a sudden your, your entry level, single family home is, you know, mid-three to high three hundred thousand dollars, which is a little bit, a bit of a stretch, so. Um, towns like Stock Rapids and such that are stepping in and trying to find ways to get creative to lower the cost of that infrastructure or put the infrastructure in, isn't so much a benefit to the developer as much as it is to actually make the homes affordable. And so, you know, to Sarah's point, there's likely to have to be some investment on our end, because it's not the way it was, it's, these developers now are looking for ways to make sure that they're protected as well as be able to provide the right services that the city needs. We've seen deals with lots of, uh, different styles of, uh, funding, you know, with TIFs and tax abatements. Um, you know, coming, uh, to help out lower those costs. Um, you know, especially to get, you know, the apartment buildings in. Yeah, I, I mean, wouldn't it be a shame, right, for us to put this, this pipeline in and then not, and then not do what we need to do to grow the city? Uh, and it's, and it's going to take time, I mean, it's something we have to plan for, it's not going to just happen even likely next year, but we have to start budgeting and saving for it. Uh, for those, for those opportunities that come along, we have to be able to pull the trigger and, and be able to, to make a move. And right now, we're in a position to not really do anything. That's the, uh, I think that's the big part of what I see this conversation today being about is, what are our priorities and how do we adjust or, or budget to make sure we go after that right priority first, but we have to start planning for it now.
So the banks aren't willing to take that leap of faith, per se? Are they willing to find, uh, have, to loan the money to a developer? If the developer is willing to take that risk?
Yeah, I mean, the, the cash flows end up being really tight. Uh, so, some of the creativity is to, to make sure that the deal works on paper. Uh, is to get some of that additional TIF or, or tax abatement from the cities. You know, maybe it's the cities that already own the land and they're, you know, selling the land for a dollar, you know, whatever it might be to help lower the cost uh, of what it takes to actually make the project happen. Uh, but yeah, the, the banks are, are lending the money. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, the interest rates aren't, aren't helping, that, that doesn't help the matters either, so.
Right.
With them not coming down anytime soon.
Right.
I mean, so.
Would the council, um, entertain that, uh, you know, a cheap land acquisition? You know, if, if we own some of this property, is that something that the council is willing to entertain to get a deal going?
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to, if I can get fifteen homes in Gulf Court, probably get twenty-five in the land we own now, it, the way it just, the way it lays looking to me.
Well, and we own this, that's what's nice about it.
And it's, and it's ready to work. It's not, you don't got to tear trees down, you don't got to do anything.
No, and I think this is really good land, from what, maybe you can comment.
Just one thing, we, we bought that for a buffer from the ponds. We don't know what's going to happen, what, how these ponds are going to work, I shy away from wanting, are you going to have an order problem out there, once we start?
Well, that was my question.
We don't know that.
That was why that was all purchased was a buffer. You know, it is not just prepared to get what you have now on the birch area of the complaint, if, we might not have the issue, we might find out in three, four, five years that hey, you know, there would be more movement.
Yeah.
But I'd be leery to do it right away.
What other land is available where we have water and sewer?
Not much that we own. Um, and really, the other prime spot is the Town's property.
Town's Edge.
Mm-hmm. Because it's all oversized to service a whole parcel. And the thing that's nice about the town property, as you probably saw in the concept, is there's a lot of flexibility, you could do commercial on one end, you know, there's a lot of mixed use, and I think that's what we're going to have to do, um, to get the numbers to flow. You know, you're going to have to be able to pair some higher density with lower density.
Right, to, I mean, to me, big picture, we're trying to do a few things here, you know, we have the industrial park, right, to, to bring in business. But those employees need houses to stay in, right, so we need to figure that out too. We have a problem with downtown and its vacancy and, and nothing really happening, so there's nothing for any of the people that moved to town to do. So, I mean, we have a, it's a, it's a three-part problem. We faced the last ten years not building anything in Foley, right, because of our, of our sewer situation. So we've solved for that, that's good, uh, and, and, you know, yep, we have to pay for it, but in order for us now to capitalize on it, we have to start thinking strategically, what steps, housing being one. Putting in a few houses on, on a small parcel we own, it's a nice touch, but it really isn't going to do anything, it's not going to really bring people into the city. Which we need in order to fill the jobs and in order to fill the stores, right, and give customers. Uh, and so, housing, I think, is probably our number one priority.
And you know what we hear is workforce. Workforce is what people are lacking, so you need to bring them in. And then hope that they get a job at one of our surrounding businesses.
Well, with that in mind then, then that goes back to being flexible with multifamily housing, single housing, and senior. So, having a parcel, I believe there's nothing wrong with putting all three of those concepts onto one piece of land.
That's what ten, isn't that, isn't that how Town's Edge has it laid out?
Yeah, but if there's Town's Edge, you kind of can see the different.
Yeah.
Yep.
Transitions, and you know, um.
But then we, if, if you did that, they'd be kind of segregated.
You have the buffers.
In a complex, you know?
Naturally, from a zoning perspective, you usually try to, you know, single family to like townhomes, to apartments, to commercial, you usually try to buffer them. Um, but, you know, I think anything's on the table right now. Um, with just the, you know, the desperate need of housing that's out there. But this does a kind of a progression.
Mark is seventy-fifth, is that still Gilmanton's?
No, that's ours. You mean here?
Yeah.
The, the little gravel road?
Yes.
That's ours.
We maintain it, right?
We maintain, well, yeah, we have to take care of it. Are you sure we don't own it? Because we gave the permit on it.
Well, regardless, if
We own it.
Once it's developed or gets developed, it's going to have to get tarred.
That'll be ours by then.
That'll be us. So we basically annexed this whole town property, everything was approved. Um, it came down to, like, the bust literally ju, happened, like, within a month or so. The plat was never recorded, you know, so it's, like, all the processes up to the final steps were done with this. Um, and then it just fizzled.
So what are we looking at, putting probably a quarter million into infrastructure? I don't know, I'm just asking.
More than that, I'd say, more than that.
Yeah, well, you're shaking your head no, like, zero. No.
Well, I, I mean, it, I can't, I mean, maybe break it down to a price per foot, that would, you'd have to go to the engineer and have him run an estimate on that, but, um, I mean, just looking at the estimates we got for Broadway and Ford. Pipe's expensive.
Oh, to fix Broadway and Ford.
Yeah, I mean, just look at those costs, just to reconstruct.
Yeah.
And, in Foley, roughly what developers say is our lots are like thirty percent more because of the necessary soil corrections. So, Brandon's number is probably not far off.
Right.
This property to the north, do we know what they've got for a price put on that land at all?
It is not listed.
Not listed?
I have never, they have never told me a price. I have heard of an, a few conversations and, like, offers that were put in, but I have never been officially told an asking price.
So there really haven't been any investors or anything, really?
There's been a couple, yes, um, but it fizzles, I, I think they want too much money for it, you know, or in this environment. I think is what it boils down to. And land prices are high, still. So this, you know, this is, we have less control over this because of the private ownership. And I think I'd mentioned before, there are deferred assessments that are coming due, so that will hopefully spark movement on it. Um, because I wouldn't want to pay that bill without, you know, having.
That's not until, you said, is it twenty-thirty?
Twenty-thirty, yep, must be paid in full by state statute, it has to be paid in full, so you can't even give it an extension. Um, on the other side, the south end, even though the location is not ideal, and Mark brings up an excellent point, we own property there, so.
How many acres is that?
What did I say it was, Mark?
Those other two ponds, Mark, they're going to stay there and be used?
By the Gulf, compost, oh yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is like, the little one's like two point something, and then what do you say we got tillable here, I, I did mark it. It's twenty-some, isn't it?
Oh, okay, I thought you were, I thought it was just that little blue piece, so I don't know what we're going to do there.
Nope.
That's a two-point six or something.
That's two point something, this is also all ours.
Okay.
This is the compost back here.
Okay, yeah.
But it is close to the pond.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have an order issue now, but we, we can't guarantee we won't.
So that's something, I mean, and again, well, this isn't something that would happen overnight anyways, um, so we can.
No, the only thing that's nice about this is this is a really good piece of land. It's, you know, for Benton County, it's a pretty good piece of land as far as dry and.
Golf court itself, have we received a lot of complaints or any complaints on odor?
I have not gotten on odor. A couple of golf ball complaints, maybe, but.
That's why I had to quit playing.
Um, and then the same developer that did golf court does own this piece in the middle here. Um, and they also did those popular places, townhomes, so. That might be another place to look.
And we have water and sewer on those?
We have water and sewer on fifty-one.
Yep.
Yep.
It stops that golf court though, right?
Nope, cause this is, used to be the rental house and we have water sewer there.
Okay, it goes up to that part.
Yep.
That part that's in the green.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
That's the old rental house.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep. We have a little driveway use that we'd have to navigate, but I think that's doable.
So to what degree are we gonna be using these ponds, Mark?
Do you wanna grab that, just?
Equalization? I guess it'd be the simplest term. It'll wa- it'll go in there and then go out at a controlled rate to St. Cloud.
So it's going there and then relayed out?
So is there gonna be enough movement in there? We won't have any orders? Will you have spring orders? You know, we don't have too big of an issue yet on? Golf ponds like we do on birch, but as they age, will we?
Yeah.
You know?
We, we would also just have to go through a process, just so you're aware, the, um, with the wastewater funding, we put a deed restriction on this piece. But that is, there is, we can look at removing that. We would just split that parcel off. Basically, when you get public funding. They don't want you to do anything to the property that would jeopardize, you know, the funding that they gave you. But in this case, the reason we got the wastewater funding was to help us grow, so there, we'd have to just work with the state on that. On removing that portion of a deed restriction, but it is doable.
So we own the land and there's already water and sewer?
Available.
Available.
Just devote to it.
Yeah, it's like.
I mean, we have to, we have to decide whether or not we'd be willing to entertain discussions with developers. On the fact that we have land that we'd be, you know, negotiate for. Maybe next to nothing, just to spur the development. I mean, a property that big, you can get a decent amount of, I mean. Like a golf court, you can get a decent amount of homes in there, or apartments, or mixed, you know, townhomes and, and, uh, regular homes.
Well, I, the popular place ones, they're actually rentals, but they filled immediately, and I don't think he's, I mean, they've always looked like they've been full. I don't remember them not being, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a popular, it's a new, I mean, it's a popular, uh. Structure.
Yeah.
I'm just afraid.
We'd have to put some kind of a park out there then.
Probably. Um, we do own, you know, property, you know, in between there. I don't know, um. It'd probably be all around because of golf courses in between, but I mean, yeah, I don't think you wanna trail alongside the lagoon. That's probably not too attractive. But part of when you do those developments is you designate space for that.
I, I just, I'd be a little nervous to take that risk. And hope that inviting residential building in there would go. Would there be some?
Yeah, I, I completely understand, yeah.
Uh, everybody's heard about the ponds in the spring. I mean, it's good property, but is it good for what we need right now?
Well.
Well, it would be, if you look at that, they would be starter homes too. If they're affordable. The whole south side were, was built around a pond.
Can I ask a question about affordable? So when you say affordable, do you mean subsidized, or do you just?
I think some of it has to be subsidized. We have to keep everything open in order to get people in.
I think that's gonna be trickier to do subsidized housing in this market.
Okay.
Because the developers have to commit. From my understanding, unless the law has changed, or, you know, the rules have changed.
I mean, developers would like to charge market rate rents.
It's almost working through the third party.
Well, and. Our demographics are getting younger, our income is going up. And I think what, I just looked it up, um, today, the median age is thirty-three point three in Foley, which it just shocked me. But, um, I think what's happening is we're having more working class moving in. You know, and probably seniors selling their homes and moving out or, you know, to a different location. I think it's important also to recognize who are, who are new. We have to build, provide for them too as well.
Right, I mean, essentially, we're planning for the future. I mean, at the same time, you know, it's trying to preserve our senior house living. As well as provide for the, you know, next wave over the future of what Foley's gonna be twenty years from now.
But I also think you can accommodate senior housing with apartments, townhomes, like, there are modes of housing, you know, that can serve both. And sometimes the mixture is a good thing too.
I guess when I say affordable, it's. An apartment complex compared to a house. That's, I look at affordable that way. Some, some people will be able to afford a house, some people will be happy just having a nice apartment.
Well, and I just.
Be flexible to have all the options.
Yep. And I just can't remember, okay, yeah. Our vacancy rate, I think Benton County overall, like, one point five percent. So there's demand for rental.
Along with tiny house, manufactured homes, all options have to be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the council's thought on that. We've talked about that before in the last few years about modular homes. You know, how the council feels about that, when they bring them in from the factory.
They've come a long way compared to back in the seventies, that's for sure. Along with the definition of tiny homes. No?
I'm not a favorite, go ahead.
Well, I, I think you just have to explore all options. Because if, if we can't get anything, that's not gonna help us either.
No.
Well, I, the first thing we have to figure out is where we can put them.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's, that's the first thing we need to figure out, is the infrastructure, the property. I mean, developers are gonna need to know that first. They're not, they're not knocking on doors asking where they can build.
Right.
You know, they're. We're, we're, you know, we're reaching out to them.
Well, we know, we had a developer that wanted to build twin homes, and we said no because it doesn't fall within our.
It's owning.
So maybe, I know he wants to build, and he still will build, can we change that?
Well, he, yeah, he has one lot that he wants, that one?
Correct.
Yep, no, that's exactly one of the things that needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
I mean, we got people willing to do that, and, and we're kinda putting the brakes on. To stop them from developing that. Is there a reason why we didn't want that? I, I don't know.
Zoning, um, our zoning code kinda, when we had all the housing on the south end go in, there were things that. The planning and the city council didn't like about how they ended up and so forth, so we did make some adjustments to our zoning code. To allow for maybe bigger lots, more space in between, you know, we didn't want them packed in too much.
Correct, that's good.
Yes, it's good, but it, in this economy, it's a struggle now. You know, yes, the concept is good. Trust me, I wish we'd have a mile in between neighbors sometimes, it'd be great. But, um, it, I mean, those were the kind of, kind of things, some of those code changes came from just. Things that happened that we didn't like, or we didn't think worked out very well for us. Um, and those things do constantly change, because people change in what they want, what they can afford, all those different. Things change with everyone, so. I mean, is this something you wanna entertain, this one? I mean, or do we wanna sit and wait? I guess, I might, what do you wanna see? Do we wanna be more proactive, or do we wanna be reactive, I guess?
I feel we need to be proactive on anything we wanna do. Otherwise, again, the, to me, the sewer line is all for not.
Exactly.
So, um, I mean, we, we invested that much, investing a little more, um, you know, at, at that rate. Compared to what we'll see from, you know, tax increases from, you know, new tax base, right, and consumers and customer shopping in our areas. It's an investment now for a, for a payback in the future.
Are you open to the, um, getting some price estimates? You know, how many can we get in there? Should we try to get some concepts? Or is it just a, I don't like it? You know, I'm too, we're too nervous about the?
I mean, you do bring up a good point, Gary, it is, there's a little gray area there maybe with. Where it's at.
How would that compare in footage compared to where those houses are on like? Birch to the golf ponds versus like the, that area?
I'd have to look at that, yeah.
I mean, it probably would, it could be similar even closer, huh?
On the birch, you mean?
Yeah, those houses on birch that are by the golf ponds, that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're pretty close.
It's, um, yeah. We can't, you know, guarantee anything, but I also, um, you know, I'd also maybe ask a developer too, you know, do you think these would sell? Cause maybe they would have an idea too.
Sure, that's a good point.
Yep.
Maybe some people don't care, I don't know.
Right.
With regards to Town's Edge, so at, at one point, they were on board and looking to sell their land, have developed. They, they know what phase two or our plans would be with that land. I mean, would it, would it be then unusual for someone to approach them and just ask how much for the land?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's a family, it's kind of a tricky situation, cause it's multiple.
Is it in a trust?
It's not in a trust, I don't think. It's just in, or is it in a trust, the state? They all, there's a bunch of kids that have a piece of it.
Well, Town's Edge would be a very nice spot for school, for housing. That would be a nice place to start. But also have this. In the wings also.
At a minimum, the Town's Edge has a significant deferred assessment that would have to be cleared off. So you're talking a hundred thousand just out of the gate. Isn't it a eighty-nine or ninety-seven thousand left on it? So you're talking that, we have that leveraged against that parcel. So they want that cleared off, plus a profit on their land. And I can't imagine what it would cost now to run that pipe, you know, that was expensive back in the day.
Right. Is it one parcel for Town's Edge? I mean, or is it, I, I mean, or could there be, it could be, could it be a phased approach where?
Oh, absolutely phased, yeah, absolutely could be phased.
You know, buy forty acres now and forty acres in the future, or something like that?
You have to subdivide, but yeah, you could do that. I mean, that's what happened with the New Life Church. So we split that piece off, or it, it got subdivided, and then we just prorated the assessment. So there's a portion of like the New Life that's active right now, where they developed. And then the other stuff, New Life has a small portion of that deferred assessment too, so they are also a player in this as well. But you could start, um, with the right of way that we plotted in, you know, and that's probably better shown on this one. So. This is the right of way we plotted, so you could start here. You know, come in, and then, you know, as you build out.
So we wouldn't have to lay infrastructure for the entire.
No.
All their land. We could just start it as a phased approach. Build it over the course of segments, years, and then next approach, and who knows, things could change, you know. Five, ten years from now, we're developers, and rates and everything changes where we. Where infrastructure is part of their deal again. Right now, it's not.
Right.
Yeah, I, and I would say that's probably the most responsible thing to do, is just to do it a piece at a time. And if it comes quicker and you gotta go, well, then we'll figure that out, cause if they're selling, we'll figure that out.
I'd rather see a controlled growth, so we don't have to go backwards and pay for mistakes that were made. We've already paid that price, so a controlled growth would be in our best benefit.
And what do you mean by that?
Well, not to go, you know, a section at a time, but also look at. Future growth, but to do it right, cause we paid over five hundred thousand dollars. And a development wasn't done right. I don't wanna go backwards.
So are you on board with a phased approach on Town's Edge?
Absolutely, yeah. As long as it's controlled.
Well, it's gotta be done right. You know, we're suffering for the mistakes that were made. In the southern part of town.
Well, um, the one thing that's a challenge with that is, if you notice, there's that wetland there. So we are kind of limited on that north side. And we'd have to do some work on that to find out what's all there, the new standards, cause you know, that always changes. But, um, we did get, the, the right of way is there, so that was protected to get us in. And, you know, New Life Church is supportive of, they want housing around them. They want that. That's, that's within the best interest of their church too. So is that about, is that a, a priority over the other piece? Is that what I'm hearing? Or?
The other one's advantage, cause we own it, but.
Yeah.
I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm a little nervous as to, I, I guess if a developer came in and said, it'll work, we'll sell. I don't have a problem with it, but I'd hate to have homes sitting out there and people say, I'm not building next to accessible. I don't know.
For young families having homes next to a school, it would be a benefit.
Oh, absolutely.
It's probably gonna cost us more money.
Yep.
But we could work with them a lot easier off our own properties other than developers out there, the price of theirs.
This is gonna cost us more money, I think.
I would look at that option, and if they don't wanna sell or can't come up with a price, then we can do something on our property.
Yep.
I mean, we're talking in circles here right now. I don't mean to be that way, but. Find out what they want, if they don't, if it's beyond what we can afford, then. We'll go build thirty houses down there and sell them, and they'll go, wow, wish we'd have done, you know, wish we'd have came here first. Well, we did.
Well, the timing's, the timing's really not right. The demand is there, they know that, so the sellers.
I know, um.
Gonna have a good price on their properties.
I mean, we've sent people to them, we have, you know, we talk, we touch base with them. They were invited to our housing study presentation. They were asked for comments during, you know, our land use plan. We have talked to them numerous times. On the north end. They do know what we intend for their property. But I also just think it, it's the timing of it, and I just, you know, I don't think they're in a big hurry.
And we have to be.
So we should, we should ask them about.
Price.
About that, and we should also try to talk to developers, maybe the ones that already own some of that land, and see what they think about building there. Or if they would.
If they could, if they could sell it, or if they have a comparable place or comparable development, you know, maybe in a similar situation how that went. Um, okay, can I ask, so this first, see what we can find out, otherwise. If we can't get nothing, if there's not gonna be much movement, we'll come back and chat about the other location.
Well, I, I don't, I think we could go ahead and get a concept on that other land.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say we can ask a developer, you know, or developers, what they think about the proximity, and if it's something that they'd even be willing to entertain. Based off that, and if. Based off that, and if we hear a couple no's, then we move on, if we hear that, yep, no problem, I'd do it, then maybe we look at a exploring, then a plan.
Well, the other thing too, at least, you could look at, um, if we did those little popper placed townhomes there. What if you even looked at a couple of those in the smaller, not the big piece, but even in like the smaller piece?
Yeah, I could see that in the small piece, yep.
Like a, would you do another of the same thing, maybe you can even use, you know, similar plans or whatever. Cause it's kinda similar sized with what?
Right.
If we can get an access, we'll have to check, make sure we can get an access off that, I would think so, then, okay.
So, we as council, are, are we willing to work with this guy that wants to put in a twin, I, I don't know what his advantage is, but he wants to put this twin home on this program.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about later in the agenda, about some code changes.
Right.
Yep.
And I think he's willing to build it, but.
Yeah, um, yeah, that, uh, number eight, that's what I had kinda brought that up for because of some code changes, so. Can I just ask one more on the housing side?
Yep.
Is the council still on board, as we were a couple of years ago, with, um, expansion of the north trailer park? And then in coordination, looking at maybe redeveloping the Glen Oaks Trailer Park? The north one's over by the school.
Yeah.
They, if you remember, the prior owner, um, Mr. Schmidt was in here, and he wanted to expand, we could not get a sanitary sewer extension.
Right.
On that, um, but there is some room out there, so at the time, the council, we kinda talked to the council and planning commission level about, we'd like to see if that's expanded, then this be redeveloped. Just like we did on the, over by the municipal pool, is the council still on board with that concept?
I am.
I would be.
Yep, okay, and, um, are they still on board with some, like, higher density residential, maybe in that location, like an apartment complex? Something to buffer in that commercial area, okay.
So, what, the school expanding to the east, they still have some properties there, or is that the same properties we took, they, talking about here?
The school has not acquired any more property, but the trailer park kinda?
I thought there was some talk at one time of their expansion, if.
They were looking at that piece by Camp of Meadows a while back, and then they were also, you know, I think when, uh, Family Dollar, they might have been exploring that. And those houses, but the trailer park actually kinda goes up to the north, you know, that driveway kinda snakes up there, but they could come around possibly.
Yeah, I have no.
There was also land for sale up there at one time, or there was, the planning commission had a meeting with a man that owned that land north of the high school.
Yeah, that's the land that is, yeah, and they wanna do a spec home.
Yes.
Yep, um, and the planning, they wouldn't, the planning or council, we couldn't do a spec home because of our zoning.
Right. But that could open up another avenue.
Yeah, it's, that property is kinda wet.
Yep.
Back there.
Are you talking about behind Camp of Meadows?
Yeah.
Yeah, wet and very expensive now.
Yeah, very expensive.
I mean, oh, almost outrageous.
But it, not saying it's available, but it's there for expansion.
Yeah. And that, um, our services on the north end too, you could possibly look at, um, further in our orderly area. Two for housing, if, if Town's Edge doesn't work, it's just not ideal, you don't usually want that leapfrog development, but, um, you know, our services run all the way up to the county shop.
Right.
So, you know, there is that potential that way further.
So, another, just another opportunity, if we have to travel down that.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanna make sure we're still on board with that, because, um, there's some new owners, and we've been having some different discussions on possibilities with that, so, okay. Any other questions on that, otherwise I, we can move into downtown unless you?
No, move on.
Um, downtown redevelopment, um, the reason we wanted to bring this one up is, um, we continue to have the issues, I think I listed some, listed some of the things in the ordinance. But we have a lot of people that are looking at our downtown buildings, cause they're pretty affordable, but, um, find out, the condition of the building is not the greatest. We get some parking complaints, um, we don't really have any, um, good funding sources, or they're not advantageous enough for, for people to take advantage of them. And may, and maybe it's because the buildings are just so dilapidated and out of, they're just not fixable at this point with the cost of everything. Looking at other options, you know, would the council consider a complete redevelopment of the downtown area? Do we, is it, are these buildings, you know, able to be repaired, or do we need to look at other options on what we can do with these structures? Cause some of them, I don't know if they can be or not, and we don't really know what they are like, some of them have not been occupied for some time. Um, you know, and we don't even know if they're, you know, up to code and so forth, so I guess, um, like was said, we have a housing issue, we have a downtown, we have a lot of vacancies. Um, a lot of buildings that, we get a lot of inquiries on, but they don't sell because of, you know, these issues, how are we going to fix that? Do we wanna look outside the box on something completely, you know, trying something, to, to do something completely different? I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Yep, I, I mean, I'll tell you that there have, I mean, many of those buildings have been shown dozens of times to potential prospects. There is a reason they're still vacant, um, the amount of money that had to be put into them to even make them habitable again is not worth the cost. Um, and we don't have the, and we don't have the customer traffic to, to offset it, not, not at this point, not today, we don't. So, yeah, downtown's a problem, I think, uh, you know, using, doing something with redevelopment, uh, some of the buildings may have to get tore down, and a developer needs to put something new up. Uh, because there is no cost incentive otherwise. I know we can look at TIF districts for that, and we can plot out certain areas, uh, you know, certain parts of our, of our downtown. But something needs to be done with downtown, because it's, it's not going to sell, uh, to anybody that can truly do anything with those buildings.
Do you wanna explore those opportunities of a redevelopment district of some kind? Um, I think the first thing though is we gotta know what these buildings are like, what they actually are on the inside.
Yeah, there'd have to be a, one where to do a TIF redevelopment, or TIF district.
TIF redevelopment district, I think, is what we talked about earlier.
You'd have to, you'd have to have someone come in, and they'd go into every property and determine what they're like, and?
What it needs.
What it needs, what it, what the cost would be to actually get them to code and, and be what they need to be again to open, uh, and what that cost is, and determines whether or not it's worth it. Um, and if not, then we can get some, there's some advantages there through TIF. And then it also attracts developers then, to be able to come in and put some projects together, you know, some ideas.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the thing is too, is like, we might have to just rethink too, some of the things, like, do we need as much commercial floor space, you know, um, on the body? You know, some of these places that are coming in, I don't know that they want, you know, two thousand square feet of floor space, they may do online, some stores, some different things. Whereas maybe they're a little smaller commercial fronts with, you know, housing on top, you know, and we might have to just look at different options.
My vision would be mixed use with, with commercial below and apartments above, um, and not just the one or two little apartments above like we have now, but, you know, sixteen units above, twenty-four units above. You can or, you could incorporate some underground parking, some lot space, depending on the redevelopment. You know, I know we have some parking lot space downtown, so depending on where we could, where we could put those, uh, mixed use, uh, developments, it's right next to a parking lot. So, you kind of combat that as well, so you're not worrying about on-street parking yet, maybe something we have to cross in the future, but I think there's ways around it for now.
When you say, when you say twenty-four unit, units, how high are you talking these buildings?
It depends, it all depends, I guess, on where it goes, I mean, you could do, and, and what, and, uh, what size they are, you know. Typically, when you're thinking about a downtown, you're, you're not putting families in there, so you're not building three-bedroom apartments, you're building one-bedroom, maybe one-bedroom studio, plus studio apartments. Uh, so you, you're able to fit a little bit more in there than, than your, maybe a standard twenty-four unit.
Well, and I think, what did our housing studies say, I think, our, it's not, we don't have necessarily big families, it's.
Right.
It wasn't like two-point-one or something, it was the average size, it was, or there was a lot of single.
Yep.
Single housing units.
Yep.
Um, so something like that might be attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is fine, I mean, all options, but we just have to watch the higher we go.
Right, we wouldn't wanna get, yeah, too, yeah, I wouldn't want that either, I'd want it, I'd want it to still be a nice clean line of downtown skyline.
Right.
But, but you also, I think you, uh, I tried to think of a community, I know I've drove through communities that have stuff like this, that they've kinda redone it, they're still brick, or they still look kind of?
Yeah, they still look like an old downtown.
But they're new, and they, they basically have the, the storefronts, and then, well, even, um, by St. Cold State, isn't that what they have, they have a little commercial, and then isn't the student housing above?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was a little different, I mean, I, I always think of like St. Joe.
Yeah.
As, as a good example of kinda redeveloping downtown.
But, um, that would be, you know, if that's something the council, we could look into that and see what options we have, but maybe the first step is to figure out what the condition of these buildings is like. I mean, would the council entertain a proposal to look at that, or what, you know, what it would take?
And that, and that does cost a little money.
Mm-hmm, I, I don't know how much, I'd have to reach out and get a quote on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be nice to know what truly is our downtown, what shape is it in?
Right.
Uh, because, right, none of us can say we've been into all the buildings or know all the things, uh, so I think the study will help us understand that, and maybe even open our eyes more to, yeah, there's a problem.
We do have, in some of those older buildings, there is an issue of lead piping, I imagine.
I mean, you might even have problems with asbestos, I mean, I, I mean, you know, lead.
And some probably have.
Yeah.
Which is what, which is why some of these buildings, you know, you, you can purchase it for fifty thousand dollars, but you're gonna put three hundred thousand dollars into just updating electric.
Right.
You know, so.
What are the options we have in overnight parking?
Well, I, I'm just saying, those are feedback.
Something we can change, or?
That's, the feedback I get is, you know, they, there's a lot of, why do we have, um, no parking overnight in the summer? They understand it in the winter ordinances and emergencies and stuff like that.
Exactly, I, I can understand it.
Yep, so, it, it, I don't know why, but it, it seems that, you know, some of them don't have their own off-site space. So, it gets to be difficult if they wanna have the unit up top, where are they gonna put these people, because, you know, some people won't walk a block and a half. So, it's just, it's just comments and feedback that I get, you know, from time to time, and I, I'm just relaying that to you. I totally understand the winter stuff, it's, you know, and that doesn't seem to be an issue, it's Minnesota, you gotta move your vehicle, we gotta plow.
What was the rea, what was the reasoning that they changed the ordinance to?
It's been that way as long as I know, yeah, it's always been no parking downtown overnight.
Well, I understand, there's a lot of cities don't have that, they just have winter parking, I was wondering why we?
I cannot street maintenance, I don't, that's the only thing I can ca, I don't know, it's always been that way.
Well, one thing, it, it gets your vehicles moving, you know, if you remember, I think you've been around long enough, Legion had trouble with, Jack's had trouble with these businesses parking in front of them. Your people come and park there, and they park there for weeks at a time.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And, and you're gonna have, you know, the reason was one, I complained. So, you know, I would think they would oppose it, cause you might have cars parked there for, you know, weeks at a time, and nothing you can do.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I would, I would say to start, explore what that cost would be to get a study done on our downtown.
Well, right now, there's, there's not occupants, you know, on some of the buil, you know, we probably aren't gonna have the issue with, until some of these buildings turn older.
Right.
Because I think the ones that are occupied are mostly daytime, or been apartments for quite some time now. Is the council okay if I bring back some proposals on that then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, industrial park infrastructure, um, we met today on the, um, deed application for, um, the business park potential buildup. And, um, basically, we have that estimate that you guys approved that concept, we're working off of that. Um, the good news is there's lots of money now that deed got its, um, pot basically replenished with the legislature this year. Um, so what we're working on is, we have to follow a couple of different things, including like, um, uh, a business commitment, um, you know, and then providing some other application materials and estimates and so forth. But the project, essentially, the construction would cover, could cover up to fifty percent of the actual costs of the pipes, the streets, you know, the physical costs. Not the soft cost necessarily, just actual construction, or, I think construction engineering might be included, but it's only for the actual construction portion. So, um, we're working with Amanda at, at BEP on that application, um, and, yeah, we have to meet some of the requirements before we can apply. So, there's gonna be a little bit of, uh, work we're gonna have to do to, to see what we can come up with.
Yeah, the big one being, uh, a letter of intent.
Yeah. So, that's basically having somebody that wishes to relocate, or come into the, or new to come in, yeah, to the park, so, and that.
It's good to be able to have an option though, to help reduce the cost of putting in that infrastructure.
And we also have, uh, the ability, um, if that's the case, if we wanna look at, um, we have some other tools to help if there was a business that wished to relocate, or we had a new business, and we have some other tools that we could look at. To help them as incentives to, um, you know, when they, they do construct, but, um, early in the process of the application, you know, we'll keep you posted, but we are moving forward with that. Just keep in mind, the council will have at least a fifty percent, um, cost share on that.
Better than a hundred.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that, it's good dollars if you get it, it's very good dollars. And that's tax base, that, you know, eventually would be put on, um, we have to invest to, to grow. Any questions on that? Okay, um, next is ARPA funding, so I think, I put in the memo, we have, uh, two hundred and ninety-two thousand on ARPA funding. That, um, we, um, we just committed or filled out the short form for infrastructure. So, we, we kinda put it aside initially for fiber, but based on my, the latest conversations with the county, we're not sure the fiber line's gonna happen or not. They're still kinda working through some things with that. So, um, the commissioners, or our commissioner had approached me about if you would be interested, you have another project that they could contribute some ARPA funding to, cause they do have some funding left over. They would like to see it go to some infrastructure project, they're looking at helping, um, City of Gilman with their sewer project, um, Rice, they're helping with, um, putting in infrastructure for development. Um, and they said if we have a project or something that we could use funds for, um, they would like to know about that, cause they could possibly commit some funds for that. Has to be, I wrote it in here, has to be committed by the end of next year and spent by twenty-twenty-six.
Well, could, could we use that on some of our street work that we're talking as far as Broadway is?
You could. Yep, you could.
Cause that's coming up next year.
Yep.
Or is there something else?
Well, I, I, we have, we're talking about a lot of big dollar projects here too, so, that's why I want you to think that through, because what, if we have our ARPA money, we have some of their money, maybe that's enough to get something going on. Potential growth too, I think, it's important to remember that too.
Well, I was looking at the water, the water issue that we have, as far as, where are we staying with that mark? As far as, um, getting rid of the discoloration.
Meaning improving the quality?
It's on the agenda later.
That is on the agenda later.
Yeah, I mean, we can jump to that if you want, it's up to you.
But this ARPA funding could also go towards our infrastructure for housing development.
Yep, it could go for basically critical infrastructure, yeah, water, sewer, broadband's eligible, um, yeah, it's, they opened it up, and because we didn't get big dollars, they, you know, we're less than a million. It's, they opened it up and because we didn't get big dollars, they, you know, we're less than a million, they opened it up more, um, which can use it for.
So do, do we need to have a project already submitted to them in order for us to get their ARPA dollars?
Um, they want to know what we intend to use it for.
Okay.
So if we have an idea, I would ask the council and I, and we can pull some, some information together and use it for that. But they were, I pitched the idea for development and they seemed very interested if it would help us grow.
Well, yeah, that makes sense.
These are the couple commissioners I talked to, they would like to see us get off the ground with that.
So there's more than two ninety-two, cause be, some of the county would be kicking in too?
Nope, two ninety-two is ours, um, the county, I mean, they're kicking in a two hundred, almost three hundred thousand for one of the projects. And I think a little bit less for another of the projects, so you, it's possible we could request a couple, a few hundred thousand from them, see what they say.
Good.
Yeah. Then we could, the two ninety-two is our funding.
That's pretty good.
Still gotta ask, but they, they don't want the money to go back, they want it to be spent in Benton County.
Well, I, it makes sense that we would use that towards any sort of housing development, I mean, as we're looking at Towns End and, or Towns Edge and such.
Yep, well, and I think, you know, that also benefits county, if they grow, I think, that's why they really like.
They get tax base too.
Yep. The, there is though, the, we want to make sure it can be spent in that timeframe too, so.
And that was by, by end of twenty twenty-six?
Yep, it has to be committed by the end of next year and spent by twenty twenty-six, yep.
Next.
Okay, so do you want me to look at anything or not? Cause we, they do want an answer at some point.
Well, housing development would be.
I mean, does that have to be pegged on to a very specific project? And we also have to be able to complete by end of twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
We have to be able to complete it, yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd say we would start with housing, but there's also the possibility that may be unrealistic.
You could do that, if it doesn't work out, we could say then we put it into the Broadway project. That could be a backup, I, I, I'm not saying that's not a good idea. My concern is if we keep investing all of these resources just in maintaining what we have, we'll never get beyond that point to grow. And you need to invest in the growth.
Yep.
That's my only concern with doing that.
I mean, do we, yeah, okay.
I'll look into some housing concepts and see if there's some options there. We can always look at the Broadway if it doesn't work out, if we, if that's, if the council's gonna move forward with that. Okay. Um, just, so speaking of Broadway, I gave you a couple sheets. We, um, had the preliminary bonding runs done and basically wrapping around everything we have. And, um, I wanted to give you an idea on, so if you look at the levy, it says level on the top, that sheet. I don't think I have it scanned, I don't think I forgot to scan it. Um, you'll notice, what I want you to pay attention to is the tax levies, so this is all of our debt service levies. It'll say two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and then all of a sudden in twenty, twenty-five, it jumps to two eighty-eight. And then in twenty twenty-six, it jumps to five fifty-two. That is the addition of that project if we were to move forward. That's how much that project would add to the tax levy, so that would be a twenty percent overall, to the overall tax levy.
What project?
For the Broadway four reconstruction.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-five. Um, the other sheet I provided with you will give you just some estimates on what homes and commercial values would add per year. It's a big project. Um, the tax levy only covers the levied portion, there's also water sewer funds committed to this as well. So you, you have a couple different funding sources in play, that's all determined by what, um, the cost of all the infrastructure is. Um, we did look at a wrapped approach, which, um, controls the increase. The concern with that is it really restricts us for doing anything, um, down the, the road. So if we wrap that into this whole schedule all the way through twenty forty, we're not gonna have much wiggle room to do any more future infrastructure improvements. So, plus, it's about five hundred thousand more in interest expense, because interest has gone up that much. So, I don't recommend this or fiscal advi- or the other option, the fiscal advisor recommends this, and I would agree with them on that. Um, I can look at wrapping in some, or putting in some ARPA dollars if we end up going that route. And you don't have to make a decision on this, this is just letting you know what the picture looks like right now. Um, we can also, we, um, we have a little bit of cash, cause our collections were good with our, um, couple of our bonds. Um, as far as, they always make you levy a little bit more to protect yourself in the instance that people don't pay their taxes. So our collection was good on our last two bond cycles, and we also refunded that one and had some savings. So we have a little bit of extra cash that we might be able to wrap into this one, but you're only talking probably a hundred thousand at most. But we were, we're gonna figure some of that out too, I've been running some numbers on that with, uh, George from Northland. Just to see if that, how much impact if we were to put some of that money into the schedule would have. Cause obviously the less money is taken out upfront, the less accrued interest you have too. So, um, yeah, just wanted to, just to give you that, it is a big project and, and we knew it was a big project. Um, we're doing, touching a lot of different things and we're fixing a lot of problems over on that end. Um, but costs have gone up considerably. So, there may be the possibility, interest may tick down by the time we, we pull this. Um, you know, you're, you're still out over a year, things can change. Um, we also don't, don't know what economic conditions may be, um, you know, if, if things change, if, if inflation is slowing down, maybe, you know, our bid will come in a little bit better, we don't know. But I just need you to be aware, we're gonna ask you about feasibility, um, in the next month or so, but if you want to move forward with feasibility. You can still move forward with feasibility on this project and we can see how it, you know, bids out. I mean, we have done projects where we have gone through the process, we bid them, we don't like the number, we've come around and bid them later, and then we go with them. You know, that does happen from time to time. It doesn't mean that the project will never happen, it just maybe means the timing didn't work or whatever, sometimes fuel can make things go crazy, whatever, so. Do you have any questions on this, does this make sense to everybody?
Not entirely, so is this, is this that, something we need to commit to for twenty twenty-four's budget?
No, this is twenty twenty-five.
And the amount that we'd be budgeting is the two sixty-three, four eighty-one?
That would actually not come into play until twenty twenty-six, because we, we do the work, the first bond payment doesn't come till that interest comes, that grew the year later. So, I'm just giving you an idea, on today's dollars or today's levy, it's about twenty percent. But yes, you will have to make that jump in twenty twenty-six, from two eighty-eight to five fifty-two to pay for this project. But then you also see, you know, things, things kinda come off because we have another payment that comes off. But I also don't, I also gotta be mindful that we have this project, but in five, seven years, you might have another big project that needs to be done. You know, there is still ongoing infrastructure needs. Questions, comments?
I mean, like you said, it definitely needs to be done, I mean, oftentimes there's what appears to be sinkholes on that road.
Oh, they're terrible.
I mean, construction, there, it's, it's blocked off, it's, it's clearly a problem.
Yeah.
And it's obviously a very well-used road, considering it's, goes to our school.
Yeah, um, and you know, this also is incorporating that the county is paying for surface and sidewalks on the county state aid portion. So, we're not paying for that surface and that's still that much.
Right.
You know, we also don't want the county to do their road without us taking care of what we need to take care of underneath. And we have kicked them a couple of years already.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they don't want to do it either, they want to make sure we get all of our stuff fixed at the same time. And I, I, you can comment, Marker, Jared, I mean, we did look at, you know, we still are doing the sidewalks, but we looked at places where we could narrow the road. Where we're trying to do things that, um, may save money, but then are also safer and so forth, and I think we looked at all those different options.
The heavy traffic on those two roads, and so, third will narrow up obviously, but there's so much traffic on Broadway and Fort, you don't wanna narrow them up, right?
But, I mean, we did look at the side streets and I think this also includes alley, doesn't it too? Yeah, I mean, it, it's a lot of improvement.
Is there a reason that on Broadway, primarily Broadway, we're getting a lot of semis and heavyweight vehicles on Broadway? Which does not help anything at all.
Going north or going south?
Going north. And I'm not quite sure, I mean, Broadway, you know, the Broadway north, you go from twenty-three to the school. And, uh, but it's part of the problem on Broadway.
Hmm.
In the spring, you can watch chunks of Broadway come out from under the dual wheels.
You know what it is?
What would they be going that way for?
Are you talking about the semis with the silage in the back?
No, those aren't semis, then they're not actually that hea- they're not, in the greater scheme of things, they're not as heavy. But we get a lot of semis, and I don't know why, where they're short cutting, I don't know, I don't get it.
I just know lately they've been hauling a lot of silage, I know that, but, on Thursday, there will be a lot of trucks going to a school.
Yeah.
For events.
Yeah, the understandable things I get, I don't understand commercial over the road semis on that road.
Watch for it, yeah. So what do you need from us then with regards to this, or is this just more informational?
It's more information for you.
Just a heads up that this is happening.
Yeah, our plan is to bring feasibility in November, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this project's been discussed for a while, Broadway, we've been putting it off, it's not gonna get any cheaper. So we're gonna have to make a decision pretty soon, or we'd be in a position of saying, well, it'd be next year, or next year.
Well, if, if any, we, we run the risk of it just getting more expensive, as it already has.
It's already kinda dedicated for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so we do have some time, and like I said, you can do feasibility, we can keep moving forward, and then, you know, we'll get actual bids before you have to commit to. Um, we're going off of estimates right now.
So things could change.
Things could change, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then, um, water treatment, storage, I, um. I just, I pulled the numbers and, um, so we have four projects or four things related to water on the, um, drinking water priority list. They total about seven point six million. So, um, the manganese treatment that you were talking about, um, about five point one, is that what you got?
Five point two.
Five point two million? So that's like the, that would also fix the brown water, the.
Yeah, that would, that would be for, that five point two million was for the construction of an iron and manganese water treatment.
Iron too, I, I couldn't think of iron.
Yeah.
Um, we are not very high on the priority list, Jared, do you have any comment on that, do you think we'll move?
Um, I, I, I think we could, the, this last year, we didn't really submit anything to the, um, IUP, because we weren't planning on doing anything in twenty twenty-four. Uh, I think if we showed that commitment and submit that IUP, I think we'd bump up. But, I do have one question, Sarah, that, uh, that ARPA money, was that construction cost or is that total, construction only, was that, uh?
ARPA money that we have?
Yeah, that two ninety-six.
The two ninety-two is what the city got for ARPA money, that's the total the city has.
And that could go to anything as far as?
Infrastructure, water sewer, um, and yeah, it can go to any critical infrastructure, broadband. So that could be used for that too, um, and then we also.
But is it just construction costs or is it, uh?
Yeah, it's the physical, I think it's the physical infrastructure cost. I mean, I'd have to dig into it, but I, I, I thought it was, it has to be for like pipe and actual equipment that were.
That well six would be under that, um, and so would the reconditioning of the existing water tower, both end of those.
I guess what, my question would be, what's our top priority when it comes to water?
So there's the treatment plant, the reconditioning of the water tower, well six.
Elevated storage.
Elevated stor- like another water storage.
And then another storage, so those are the four things?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And one of them costs five point one million dollars?
The treatment.
The treatment plant does, yeah.
Yep, that's the biggie.
Where would that go, or where would?
Own it well six.
Own it well six.
Own it well five, well six.
Five and six are supposed to be together, or the six.
Five is there now, six would be the new well.
We have good volume of water out there.
That, that, that kinda falls in line with our residential growth, it's pretty hard to get people out here building when they know we've got some bad water problems. So it's kinda gonna go in conjunction with all that.
Yeah, I, I don't argue with you, Ethan.
Big wish list.
It, it, there's a lot of stuff that we need. Um, but yes, I, I guess that ARPA money would be eligible for that too as well.
Along with any grants that are out there?
Maybe you can comment on funding, uh, there, we're pretty low on the list right now. I mean, we're between four fifty-three and six twenty, out of like six something or, yeah, we're bottom.
But if we have a project, we'll bump up a little.
Well, I mean, we've had projects on the priority list for, when did we start submitting these, twelve eighteen, nineteen?
I think it was before that, I think it was before that, yeah.
But we haven't submitted an IUP though, and that's kinda the next step as far as showing your commitment. Um, now I don't know how far you would jump up on that list, I mean, like Sarah was saying, we're kinda down there, um, but.
So we don't.
Submitting that also doesn't, you know, you don't get the funds, you don't, you don't have to move forward either, right?
Sure.
It's gonna follow a similar process like with the wastewater.
Yeah.
You have to submit and kinda commit and.
And, and you may not know, but what's, what's in a ballpark wait time for that list, I mean, is that like a three-year thing or a? Could it be, is it, or is it years, or, or it could be months, doesn't, or does it just depend?
Years.
Yeah, I, I can't exactly.
So we'd, so we'd wanna start planning now on our priority.
We, we put ourselves on the list, cause we know it's gonna take some time, and unfortunately, what happens is the list gets bigger and bigger every year.
Okay, I, I feel like if we did the water treatment plant, we would also do well six at the same time, I, I mean, whi- while you're there digging and doing things.
You know, our kinda list of priorities here for the PPL application that we submitted, um, those two are the top two, well number six and then the treatment plant.
Do you know why our manganese plant didn't score as high? Like our treatment plant scored the lowest.
I haven't seen any comments, so no, I, I don't.
And I was.
I definitely can reach out though.
Well, and I, I didn't know with the manganese that we got, if that would change things, and it's still pretty low, you know, as far as why, thought we'd get more points.
Why we would get some more priority?
Mm-hmm.
If we have unsafe brown water?
Is it safe?
Safe.
It is, yes.
Safe. Colorful water.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, if anyone asks too, like, as far as we, we have to treat with fluoride, if you get that question, we're required to do so. I know that, I got a couple inquiries about that the last couple days.
Well, it, it, it's just hard to comprehend that the water in one spot is, I have no problem with it, I think it's great. But I've seen some water in other places that I wouldn't wash my vehicle with it, and I'm wondering what, what the difference, or what, what's happening?
I think it's a piping thing, isn't it, I mean, high spots, low spots.
Would that be a lot of the problem with the piping?
Which well's coming from?
Yeah, cause how can you have, like I say, I've seen how bad it is in one spot, but how can it be concentrated there? And not be the same all over? I mean, spot in the pipe, all the water flows, something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
But the water treatment plant would fix that for all or would there still be areas?
Take care of it for all. You're gonna have a time period.
Yep.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a time period. Obviously, it's gonna not turn the switch on tomorrow, it's gone, but.
Sure.
You're gonna flush your system out very heavily and hopefully at that point it would.
Well, and it has to with si- six going in, four needs to be sealed.
That's the problem is, we, we have four, but three has big issues too now, so we may have to do some discussions there.
Um.
So four will go away, three has issues. And six would come in.
Are you better off trying to make, let them keep four and take three away?
Why did four have to get taken away? Or why does it have to get taken away?
Well, I was just saying, the, what we have in our priority list here was that the wells six and five were gonna be our primary ones and then three was gonna be the emergency. Kind of, just that, that's all we would need to maintain our, our system.
I think we also.
Even with future growth.
Yes, yep.
I think we also need to watch what's going on. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, you can, I'll refund that population for you. I'll answer that question in one second, but uh.
I think it's also important, we gotta, PFOS is on here too. I think we also have to watch what's going on with some of the new chemical regulations too.
Right.
Whereas we haven't gotten hits on some, but if something comes up, that might change the situation because there might be a different thing they would prefer us to treat for or so, you know, I think that's something else that we have to consider.
And to answer your question, yes, it was a population of thirty-five hundred in two thousand twenty, in two thousand forty is what we used. So yes.
I'll, I'll just add with these projects, um, you're, you're looking at probably a similar situation. Maybe you can leverage some grant funding, but then you're probably taking out a loan. Just like with the wastewater. But with this type of infrastructure, this is water rates, so this is the user fee item. This is a tax levy, it's user fees.
Right, so, so water will go up?
Yep, water rates would have to increase to help pay for any infrastructure improvements or debt services taken out and so forth.
So all, all the more important is why we need more homes built and people living here to help offset that cost.
Exactly.
Correct.
So do you need to hear from us then, you know, as far as, you mentioned like the I U P or priority, I mean, it, it sounds like we need to start doing something to get ourselves higher on the list or, or put something in motion so we can start planning for it, cause it, cause it could be years from now.
Mm-hmm. Um, I think, would it be helpful for us to give you some like scenarios too on what this would cost? What that would affect the ratepayers too? I mean, I'm just.
I mean, yeah, probably.
Some direction as to.
Maybe the first step is to, okay, what, what's this gonna cost and, and is the I U P ones, a deadline for the I U P?
Oh, that was January past.
Yeah, but was it January?
It was in, uh, it was in June.
Okay.
That Friday.
So it's every, it's the same year of year, the same.
So we'd have like till June of next year if we wanted to put on, put in for the I U P?
Well, I, I assume we'll continue with the, the PPL, which is in April or May, uh, and then the I U P is in June.
So I think the, provide some estimates. And that won't, we can probably back in using some of our wastewater planning that we did, you know, with loans and stuff like that, um, provide some estimates on rate impacts.
It would be uh helpful to know too, when we're talking about development for housing, you know, if we were to add forty homes, you know, what, what that would do to the cost as well, you know, as far as the impact. Cause the intent would be to add homes, add water treatment, I mean, does it?
It's gonna be hard because with that sprinkler change you're making, I, I kinda, we're still gonna have this little bit of a, you know, wild card on how usage is gonna be. We can do our best, just see what we can come up with.
Or what, or what every house added could reduce or, or you know, just so you, just a ballpark, so we have an idea of.
Yeah, and maybe we'll just make an assumption on an average water bill.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that works. Okay, do you wanna talk about PFAS? Is there anything, there's a couple seminars coming up or?
No, we've been doing testing on well three for what, a year now? We don't have our full year in, so it's almost a year. We've had small traces. So we were on with that, what is it, through rural water, the lawsuit thing?
Yeah, yeah.
The, whatever.
You can't say, I can't say the name.
Yeah, it's through Minnesota Rural Water. It's a multi-city. We're gonna be doing, uh, we gotta do baseline testing of all of our wells. We do like twenty-nine tests or something. So we're gonna be doing that next Wednesday. And that's the next step of where we're at and then hopefully we'll go back to administrative to do their, you know.
Yeah, we're working through the process, um, filing a claim.
There's a long list of stuff and the next one was sampling, so it's five hundred and forty dollars a sample, the, they're sending, you know, we'll be doing that Wednesday.
And we're gonna be sampling these anyways because of some of the other requirements coming down, so it's not like it's anything that's.
Yeah.
We're gonna be seeing this anyways.
So we are working on it. I guess the answer, we do have some minor hits on, uh, we do have some hits on well three. Um, we haven't done much testing on the others, cause we never had any on the previous tests, but that is where we're at now.
I think compared to some other cities, we're doing much better.
We're not having, uh, soccer apples or weight park are having the bigger issues, but you know, they had some other industries there, we'll see.
But we just want you to be aware, we don't, we, that could possibly be something infrastructure-wise that we'll have to deal with at some point.
With only that well or? Or with, or does that affect?
A lot.
Okay.
I mean, will it be something that well and there's, money comes out of that and it'll pay for something?
Okay.
You know, like well, well two when we got well five? I mean, it's not gonna be that money. It's not gonna be a million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Let's not keep moving on. Or do you want? Ordinance amendments, future development, we touched base on this a little bit. Um, council member Swanson talked about the twin homes. Um, that issue is our lot size. Um, we require a larger lot size. Um, in this particular instance, the, they need a couple hundred square feet of lot size, so that could be a code amendment just to allow for a, you know, more dense stand a lot. Um, smaller footprints, you know, just in general, we talked about tiny houses. I think I, did I provide you the tiny house kinda in the, okay? The um accessory dwelling unit, um, that's one that Amanda had brought uh forward to us too that some cities have been doing. The idea with that is maybe you can have a rental or like an in-law suite, something maybe um more use of your property, um, more affordable for you to, to live. Um. I'm, I'd like to bring some of these to planning commission. Um, are there certain things as a council, like I do not, we do not wanna see tiny homes. We do not wanna see, you know, um, mixed use. What, is there anything that you just know as a concern right now? Because we wanna make sure we are bringing forward something that's realistic too as well, to the five of you, since you make the final decision. But I mean, are you open to some, you know, cha- quite a bit of changes to the zoning to allow for some of these, these items? I'm not saying everything needs to change. We still have to have our standards. I understand that, but, um, you know, I know a lot of people prefer to have, you know, three-quarter acre lots, probably not feasible, you know? You're probably looking at smaller lots, smaller houses, um, you know, maybe even setbacks have to be discussed in some cases. Is there anything that you don't like or something you'd like to see incorporated that you've seen elsewhere?
I mean, with regards to twin homes, I don't often see them as one-offs, you know, in the middle of a development. Usually it's a development of twin homes.
Right.
Um, not opposed to being creative, I guess, uh, but again, to be, you know, to have some standards, I guess, would be, would be the big thing. That's my take on even the accessory dwellings, you know, what would our standards be? What would we allow and not allow? Tiny homes. I'm impartial, I guess. Uh, twin homes, I, I think it's a good use of space. They're, I mean, they're, the ones I've seen, the new ones are well done. You know, they, they look like a home, they don't look like a, a townhome or a, or what might look appear to be an apartment, they're, they're houses that are just attached.
I think most of these townhomes too, they're not two levels, they're just one level, so it's not like you're building some gaudy thing up in the air where if you need a smaller footprint, that's fine, or a smaller lot, you know, reduce a little bit of lot size, I'm fine with that.
Some of the smaller like homes might be good for the older parts of town too, maybe where the house is just not salvageable, you know, and needs to. That might be some of those tiny, smaller homes might look really nice and all, cause they just are limited.
Mm-hmm.
And they can't meet the minimum standard now in a lot of cases.
Well, I, I feel like we have some tiny homes already in town. I mean, there, quite literally, there's some tiny homes here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then we might need to look at some of our code because some of it, if they don't, um, like legal non-conforming, if they don't save, sometimes they have a hard time. So maybe we need to look at, um, if that happens where somebody wants to tear it down, we work with them to rebuild.
Yeah.
You know, considering what the footprint or they have, what they have available to them. You know, we did that change with accessory buildings based on lot size. That's been very well received, I think. So we kind of, instead of putting a standard size on things, we said, you know, if you have this sized lot, you can cover this percentage, you know, and that seemed to work well. Okay, if there's something otherwise you think of or you want me to look into, let me know, but I'm, um, I sent some information to planning and then I, I plan to bring some stuff to them in the future regarding some of those items I put in the packet. And, um, you know, based on some of the requests we've gotten, we've got about like three, four things that we could talk about right now that I think would help. Okay, that's all I need for that. I just wanted to make sure there was nothing that was a hard no. We're on number nine. So levy. Um, what'd you think of the comparisons?
Kind of low.
Uh, I'll add one to you, Hinckley fifty-two percent. Not sure what happened right in your back, but. Yeah, very low compared to surrounding.
Right, well, when I think about redevelopment and our investment we need to make in order to add housing, you know, fix downtown, talking about the industrial park, we, we should be at least saving money or budgeting money now for those future projects, uh, because we, we can't do it all at once and, and we aren't gonna be able to make a decision on, at one moment, so having the money available is I think gonna be imperative to our priorities of truly growing the town.
I think with this year's budget, we have to leave it, I mean, we can't raise it anymore now, of course.
You can, still raise it. We haven't passed it.
We haven't passed it yet.
I thought you said it can only go down.
Only after you pass the preliminary.
Once it's passed, oh.
So we didn't pass it last time, so.
I mean.
So we can still raise.
Right.
You can still raise it.
I mean, I think, you know, again, with our, with our town, has not seen true development or growth in ten years. To me, that puts fully ten years behind. Uh, and when we look at some other surrounding levies, we're continuing to do ourselves a disservice.
Yeah, I am not gonna promise you that next year is gonna be any less painful, you know, because it's, it's tight, the tight budget right now.
Well, and once we start looking at the Broadway project and everything else coming up, I mean.
I, I, I don't envy your spots. I understand with, you know, sewer rates and everything else too, but.
So what do we need to make?
What's our average?
Amendment or do we need to adjust this?
If you, if you want to make an amendment, you'll have to let me know what you're thinking and I can run, put in some numbers to give you a new percentage. Otherwise, what's presented is, um, what you had indicated at the prior budget workshop.
Well, I know not, was it forty or fifty thousand we knocked off? It's, I mean, that made it back to seven percent, wasn't it, or five point eight?
Yeah, I can see what that does here, just sort of reading here. So adding fifty thousand back is, um, seven point four seven.
And what were we, what were some of the, what would you say the average was for? High?
Uh, double digits.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. The only other, the, where is it here? Um, probably between eight and nine. I mean, you got Saint Joseph, that was sixteen and a half. Maure was twenty-four. Um, but then you got some eights and some sevens in there. The memo last page if you're looking for them. I, I didn't, I knew we were gonna be low. I didn't expect we would be this low and what the chatter was is just, you know, the cost of everything, just with all the. And, you know, some people are like, we're hacking the heck out of our CIPs and we're still not getting anywhere, you know?
Yeah, pro- products aren't going away.
Yeah.
Uh, repairs aren't going away, growth isn't going away, prices are only going up.
Does anyone ha- excuse me, does anyone have any objections to raising it, that extra fifty thousand or what number are you guys looking at?
Where would that go to?
Seven point four.
Yeah, where would we?
Yeah.
Should just put it in the bond?
I just put it in the bond just to get the number in there, but it would, I would probably put it in the general fund, so either like capital or, um, you know, something related to our growth or infrastructure.
Go ahead.
Well, and I know all of that, but we should be looking at, you know, and we have the street budget, uh, street maintenance fund. We got a lot of nice streets in town, but if we don't maintain them, they're gonna, you know, twenty thousand dollars it's. We'll do a seal code every five years or something, then, you know, I'm not saying the whole fifty should go to something like that, but we should, that'd be a spot to put some, cause we know Thirteenth needs probably an overlay or a million overlay, uh, you know, there's roads, if we get Norman done in a couple of years, Ren. You know, lots of roads that in the middle of the development area that we aren't gonna, they'll get an overlay before they get redone. I'm in favor of you guys putting up a little bit higher. You guys can decide your number, but.
What does another twenty-five thousand do?
Two twenty-five or two seventy-five?
The seventy-five? Seventy-five thousand, nine point four two.
It started at six, six.
So tax capacity is estimated to increase fifteen percent, one percent evaluation is new construction.
That would put us up to what? Nine point four two?
Nine point four two, and that's an extra seventy-five thousand. You can lower it later too.
One three.
Yep, you are not, that is not your final number at the end. You can lower it, you just can't raise it.
Well, with everything on our plate, we don't have a lot of choice but to raise it.
I guess I don't envy you, I know it's tough.
Nine point, nine point four even gonna be enough.
Never enough, but that's, that's city, that's budgeting reality.
What does a, what does one hundred thousand dollars do?
Eleven point three seven.
I'm comfortable at seventy-five thousand. And we can decide where.
And that was that, what percentage?
It goes under nine something then.
Yeah.
Everybody go to nine point four two.
I mean, the, the, I guess the theme I'm seeing in, in some of these neighboring cities is the larger cities are able to stay in that, we'll say eight, eight and a half. It's the smaller cities that are having to increase more.
Right.
Right, and again, tax base.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's really all ours to it, yeah.
And, you know, it costs a lot of money in the infrastructure, and they have less to spread it. Seventy-five, is that the most of them again? Yeah, nine point four two.
It's what, a two percent swing every twenty-five thousand? I mean, I'd, I'd hate to see it go lower than that.
No.
Just considering all of the things that need to happen.
Any other discussion on this?
Well, then, if you were to do that, what we would do is raise that general fund number by seventy-five thousand.
And then we can decide if it's going to streets, or wherever it would go to?
General fund would probably be a max, because we have all of our capital funds. Obviously outside of general fund, but that depends who's the water and, that's where I do it.
Raise that to such seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not that, so nine four two is that, is a seventy-five thousand increase.
Okay, so, I'll just give you the numbers. So, your would be one, so your general fund would up to one million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty.
Sorry, say that again?
The general fund on your resolution would go one million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty, and your total would be, I just wanna double check my math here. One million four hundred thousand one ninety.
Wow, one million four seven five.
One million four hundred thousand. One ninety.
It wouldn't change, the proposed levy then?
The total on the bottom, cause you have to take out LGA. Oh, no, no, you're talking.
That's a different sheet.
That's a different sheet. Nope, that's right, so your proposed levy would be one million four hundred thousand one hundred and ninety. I just added it on your resolution, so that you can make an amendment to adopt the resolution, so you know what numbers to amend. I would just move this up here.
Oh, that changes with you?
Yep, I just had it in the bond, just because I don't like to mess with my formulas. Cause that's coming from another formula, so we'll do this.
No, that's fine.
And then, don't, don't panic yet. There.
I'm assuming this would need a motion.
You do need a motion to adopt the preliminary levy, and I'll need to amend the resolution, I can give it to you here.
I'll make that a motion.
There is motion been made, is there a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twelve. So, any further discussion? If all four say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Was this a yes?
Wasn't I doing a nay?
Well, there's one nay for sure.
You were a nay?
Everyone else was yes? Yep. Motion carried. Other business, pool manager update?
Okay, um, I just wanted us to know that you got that update on the pool manager, you can just read through that on your own time if you haven't yet. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to bring your attention to is we have walk to school day coming up on October fourth. I'm looking for some volunteers, if you're interested. Okay, fire hall?
Yep.
Okay, um, anybody else let me know, we walk, usually help walk kids from the fire hall, and then, um, we have some volunteers that walk them from like Thirteenth Avenue, that side. And then we also can have people just meet or be at the GA church to escort kids there too as well.
What, what's the time down there?
Um, on your, on your flyer, Gary, they'll show it at the bottom, I think, there's a.
Seven twenty, so seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Seven ten. Davis, oh, seven forty-five.
Do you wanna do the GA church again, Gary?
What's that?
You do the DA, GA church again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then I'll plan on you, and, and if somebody else, let me know, if it works in your schedule. And then the last thing I had was, I had put a flyer on the E S S T, I just wanted you to be aware of this. This is one of those mandates, and we're still learning, but basically what we've been told, every employee will accrue, earn sick and safe time. Um, the league was hoping to exempt paid-on-call firefighters, but even that's coming back now as a no. So, we're gonna work through this. Um, I think you'll see some impact next year, but I think the bigger impact will probably come as this is in place for a couple of years.
It'll be twenty twenty-four, we'll notice the bigger impact.
Yeah, well, and, and my thing is, like, when they start accruing more, um.
Sorry, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five, we'll see the bigger impact.
Um, but also, the other thing, when we close the pool for weather, they can take this E S S T. So, we have a cold, cloudy rainy day right now, that's the guidance we're given, so, um, we're, we'll navigate through this, and we'll get you some recommendations on some policy changes, but this is, we have no choice. Um, and then once we get this figured out, we're gonna work on paid family leave, which is coming, you know, two years after that, so.
Right.
Just read through this, just for your information, um, we're gonna have some fun trying to figure this all out, which is, a lot of organizations are.
Everybody will, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
What time at the fire hall, October fourth?
It's on your sheet.
Seven, they leave at seven twenty.
On the bottom.
Yeah, seven twenty, yeah.
Cause I don't even know.
Did we, I seen new solars up, are they functional?
Is that gonna aid? Yeah, RRFPs are up, installed, uh, working with the exception of eastbound, at the roundabout, on the south side is missing a component. I did not hear when that one's coming, and I don't know the, I think S C H C's gonna be here and inspect them tomorrow, maybe?
Uh.
In the next couple days?
I was gonna wait for, back next, yeah, as far as the.
Yeah, cause that one's not running, so I suppose you can't inspect it, so we want, we're gonna try closing that out.
Push button control, uh, whatever.
Yeah, you know, the flashing lights that start, so drive by, and, uh, they're all working, I tell you, the eastbound, south side is not working at this time.
And they're push button?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. And, don't ask why the sign on it says, warning lights, warning lights do not require traffic to stop. I did question that.
Pretty, pretty obvious.
Huh? Wa- warning lights do not require traffic to stop.
Isn't, isn't a cross.
So, what's that mean?
Well, cross, crosswalk.
If I got sued somewhere, and whatever, you're asking traffic to stop, I guess, I don't know.
Well, crosswalk, you're required to stop.
You're required, but the warning lights.
But the warning lights don't require you to stop.
If somebody sues us.
I mean, I'm sure, yeah.
And they have the voice saying, they beep all the time, you walk up to them, you hear the beep, so the, the, uh.
Non-seeing people?
Vision impaired, uh, but then. Yeah, no, and then it's, they speak, you know, they have the voice, so they seem nice. The radar feedback sign, they just said, recall the located, and got called in today, so, I don't know, maybe end of the week or something, might see that, I know they wanna get it done, even though it's not part of the project, they don't know that, so we're, hopefully they'll get it done here in a couple of days.
Will we take, will we take down the extra pedestrian crosswalk sign? Cause there, there's kinda like two next to each other now.
Yes.
Okay.
The one at Broadway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Brad, Broadway, yeah.
Yeah.
There's like one, and then like, you know, and then like five feet later, there's the other one.
I thought that one should go, so, yeah, I think so.
That one, the south, yeah, we might even, maybe tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll come down.
They just pull out of the ground, it's not hard. Uh, well, I wanna say, thanks.
They have school crossing signs on the roundabout, they can't get them back to change the signs, we're probably gonna take the pedestrian crossing sign, move it down to there, and just get it done, so it, and there's no, when you come in on the right side, you don't have crosswalk signs on three of the spots. So, somebody, whoever was left-handed or whatever, did the project design, and look at that. I keep asking that question.
They don't make the pedestrians with the crosswalks emblems anymore at all.
But if you go this way, you have them all.
Yeah.
If you're going this way, you don't have them. Take a look at your sign, guy.
All right, I'll get through there sometime. Any other thing to come before this?
I wanna thank Mark for the ride-along the other day, it was very eye-opening and very educational, thank you.
If not, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All four say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.
Thank you for, I know that's a lot to begin, but thank you.
Just win the lottery, they say.